Select Board Meeting, Monday, July 14, 2025, in the Waqquat Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. We're broadcast live on local cable channel 8 and 1072, and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, It's 6:00 PM, and we'll convene the meeting and open session. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, infinite, and everlasting.
Thank you. I know we have a 6:05 PM public hearing. Thank you. I'm too anxious. Thank you, John. Could we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Okay. And review and approval of meeting minutes, Monday, June 23, 2025, regular and executive sessions. I don't know if there's any questions about the minutes?
I did not.
The meeting to support the minutes is approved. May I have an approval of the minutes? Second.
Discussion? I actually have a change that I'd like to recommend. On page 8 and 9, we have, and it's just moving a section. Beginning on page 8, we have the Town Manager Updates, which is typically where those would go. That evening, we moved those updates up in the meeting, and the reason we moved them was there were two hearings to follow that. And moving them makes more sense in the whole structure because of that. So there are no changes, except if we could take from Town Manager Updates all the way through on page 9 to where that stops with the roll call vote, and just move it forward to the bottom of page 4, right before the review of special event permit applications, because that colors the way we handle the permit applications.
So I would approve the minutes with the change.
Second?
Second.
And John?
I abstain.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. So we have 6:05 public hearing, petition W014AOTWTL dated March 17, 2025, from Verizon New England, Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy. And McClark will read the notice.
Town of Mashpee and the Select Board will conduct a poll hearing on petition W0 number 14A0TW2L dated March 17, 2025, from Verizon New England, Inc. and N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to relocate one existing jointly-owned pole numbered 33/2, located on the south side of Wilson's Grove, northwest corner of the property of 25 Wilson's Grove, and at a point approximately 93 feet west from the existing pole of 33/3, and 88 feet east of existing pole 33/4. Proposed relocated pole 33/2 to be relocated 104 feet west of existing pole 33/3, and 77 feet east of existing pole 33/4. Proposed relocation is being requested to move pole 33/2 to the property line. Said hearing shall be taking place Monday, July 14, 2025, at 6:05 in the Waqquat Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass.
For the record, I did not write that.
Wow.
Hi, my name is Mike Wallinggevich. I'm a veteran for Verizon. This order came across through EverSource for the property owner located at number 25 Wilson's Grove. That was a long sentence just to ask, can we move the pole over 11 feet over to the property line? That is all.
Are there any questions?
I don't.
No.
Okay. And entertain a motion to, oh, we have to close the public hearing. Is that correct? Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And yes. Okay. And motion to approve?
Motion to approve the moving of 11 feet?
That is correct.
Second.
As stated.
It's stated in the file. Mm-hmm. Okay. Discussion?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy? Stay?
Stay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have another public hearing at 6:10. Do we need to wait for the parties here? It will be 6:10. Okay. A public hearing, petition W019857466 dated February 5, 2025, from N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy.
All right. The Town of Mashpee Select Board will conduct a poll hearing on the petition. Yeah, this is the one. It's the same. All right. Sorry. Hearing on petition W0 number 19857466 dated February 5, 2025, from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to install one new FO pole labeled 42/7A in the right-of-way along across Ninnegret Ave., Mashpee, Mass., and further to be granted joint or identical locations for permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables together with such sustained and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary, and with said poles be erected substantially in accordance with the plan of 19857466 dated February 4, 2025, and finally, to be granted permission to lay and maintain underground cables, conduits, wires, and connections with the poles and buildings as each may desire for distributing purposes. Said hearing shall take place Monday, July 14, 2025, at 6:10 PM in the Waqquat Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. And you may submit questions, comments via email to selectboard@mashpema.gov to the hearing and by contacting the office directly at 508-539-1401.
We could have had the pole up by now.
And the Assistant Town Manager is correct. It is 6:10.
Thank you very much. Marissa Jackson with EverSource. So what we're proposing again is the install of one new pole along Ninnegret Avenue, approximately 83 feet from an existing pole we have, which is 42 over 7. And the purpose of this construction is to accommodate a new construction property along the roadway. That being said, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't have any.
I have one.
I know. Thank you. Are there any questions from the public?
I just, I spoke to the applicant just a little while ago, and it should be approved on the condition of placing the pole at the edge of the right-of-way, because we may have future widening of that road or a sidewalk. So she's aware of that, and will bring that forward as we spoke of earlier. So just wanted to make sure the board was aware. Thank you.
Certainly. We're in agreement with that, and we'll make sure to mark out the pole prior to any kind of digging, and I will speak with the Department of Public Works directly, make sure everything's satisfactory.
Okay. And any comments from the public? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And is there a motion to approve the petition W019857466 with the condition that the place of the pole be at the edge of the right-of-way, as stated?
So, second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Would you like to vote? David?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes as well. Thank you. 6:15, is the applicant here? Okay. So we'll open the 6:15 public hearing, which is an application to operate a new livery vehicle for higher service, William St. George applicant. And do you want to read the public notice?
Mashpee Select Board, acting as the licensing authority for the town, will conduct a public hearing on the application of William St. George to operate a livery vehicle for higher service in the Town of Mashpee. Said hearing will be held on Monday, July 14, 2025, at 6:15 PM in the Waqquat Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass.
Just one other thing, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did receive verification from the police chief today that the department has conducted a review of the service in question before you, and they have confirmed that any vehicles to be used by the taxi cab service, or in this case, delivery service, are properly registered and insured, and that any operators for the service are properly licensed and have no affinity convictions. And they've attested to everything that the gentleman is going to be submitting as being in order.
Thank you. Mr. St. George, would you like to add anything?
I'll just be operating a livery service that services the entire Cape, and the vehicle will be stored at a commercial space on Market Street in Mashpee Commons. And I have all the proper insurance and registered plates.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions?
No. I think the only one I had is the service is only going to have the one vehicle?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Or comments from the public? A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Discussion? Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Great. Thank you.
A motion to approve the application to operate a new livery vehicle for higher service, William St. George applicant?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes. Congratulations. Next, we have discussion and certification of disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract. Hope Hansen Hanscom, Cape Cod Collaborative. Hi, Hope.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Oh, it's good to see you, too. Hi. So it's not for me that I'm here. It's on behalf of the Cape Cod Collaborative. We run an extended school year program where our students come who, they require an extended year, and we have an occupational therapist who works for the Mashpee Public Schools who wants to do some consulting and work directly for our ESY program. So in order for her to work for both, because Mashpee is a member of Cape Cod Collaborative, she needed to submit this disclosure form for the conflict of interest requirements. So I'm here on her behalf. If the board is willing to approve this tonight, then I would ask for the chair to sign it, and then I'll take it with me, and then you really don't have to see me again for a long time, hopefully. As much as I love seeing all of you. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Any discussion?
This was just for the summer, right? Is that what I was reading? Yes. If I could be lucky enough to get this person to work all the time for the collaborative, they wouldn't need a disclosure from you. But no, it's just for summer.
I guess the only question I had was, is this a typical service that we fill on a regular basis? And was it competitively bid, or at least three different quotes?
So that's not how we operate in the hiring. You have to post the position, which we have. It's for an occupational therapist. We've posted for an occupational therapist since December and have not been able to fill it. We do have someone starting in the fall, but she didn't want, she wasn't moving down here in time to work for the extended school year program. So Casey Van Heisen, who again is a fabulous OT that works for Mashpee, doesn't want to work a full summer program for Mashpee, and Mashpee doesn't have a need for her in the summer, but she does want to work a more loose schedule, which she can work around her family, which we could offer at the collaborative. So I also worked with Mashpee Public Schools before trying to poach her.
Okay.
Joking, sort of.
Sounds good.
And if I could, Hope was nice enough to give me a call, and this was just a legal technicality.
Sure. And I did work with your counsel. She's lovely, and you connected us, so we chatted about it. She was not sure if we even had to do all of this, but unfortunately, we do. I will say, just on a side note, and then I'll promise I'll be done, it's a silly, silly loophole in the regs that if you work for a public school, you can't work for a collaborative that's a member of a public school in the summer, because so many of us want to hire our, you know, in the summertime, we have opportunities for our folks. So you may see me do this several times in the next, you know, as long as I'm at the collaborative, and it's, like I said, just a loophole in the law that requires us to do this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the certification of disclosure by municipal employee of financial interests in a municipal contract?
Second.
Discussion? Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike? And I'm yes. Thanks. Thank you. Next, we have discussion of Mashpee River Fishway Dam, Route 130. Kathryn Laurent, Director of Public Works. Hi, Kathryn. Welcome.
Good evening. So I'm here before the board to request a letter be sent to the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Council about the Mashpee River Fishway Dam project. I talked to the town manager, and he had suggested that I come before you to review the project and ask that you send the letter, government to government. And it really is to encourage participation in the public engagement process, which has already started for the project, but just to, I think, emphasize that this is an important project for the town as well as for the tribe, and just to make sure that, again, government to government, that they understand that we are, we really do want their input in the process. So I did include in your package just a summary of, you know, where we are in the project and design alternatives, matrix that we went through with two conceptual designs for the project. One, and, excuse me, this is talking specifically about, right now, the Fishway Dam, which is the Fishladder Dam at Route 130. Because we are impounding water, it is classified as a dam by the state. We are regulated by the state because of that. We have to do regular inspections and meet certain conditions because of that classification. And our last inspection found the dam to be in poor condition, and we actually are under order from the state to do something about the dam, either to repair it, to bring it up to standards, or the alternative to remove it. And that is the alternative that we are recommending that the town move forward with. It would eliminate those requirements to comply with the dam requirements, which includes, as you may all have witnessed, last year, we did a lot of clearing of vegetation along the embankment. That is a requirement of any dam structure, that there not be woody vegetation. So that would be an advantage of, by eliminating that requirement, we could revegetate that area. We were successful in receiving several grants to help with the project, and we are under a timeframe to move the project along, which is why we have made the decision to move forward with the dam removal. But again, there will be opportunities for continuing engagement, specific to the dam and what happens at that location, but as well as the entire river corridor that we're looking at from the Mashpee Wakeby Pond all the way down to the Route 28 crossing.
Okay. Are there questions for Kathryn?
I'm just looking at, so Kathryn, it's like, there was, the two choices, just to kind of simplify it, is it's either removal, or it's the rehabilitation. Is that correct?
Correct.
So again, so they talked about the disadvantages. Mill Pond will be drained and unvegetated. So that's the disadvantage, correct, of having it removed?
So, and I think it's important to note that that would be temporary, a temporary change, but it is a change. You would not have an impoundment. But part of the conversation that we will be having, you know, at this point, moving forward, is, what does that look like? It will not be a pond like you see today, but there is certainly interest in making sure we maintain some sort of wetland there, whether it's pools of water or freshwater wetlands. I think that's still what will be discussed and decided in the 30% design process that we are just starting.
Okay.
So we'll be looking at the conversion to almost a man-made pond to a stream with some pools?
Correct. So there will be a defined, a better-defined stream channel, which is one of the issues that we have right now, is there's a lot of sedimentation, and Mill Pond is a very shallow pond, which creates other issues with not having that defined channel. The sand from the pond washes down and just fills in that whole area rather than flowing downstream. That confuses the herring. It leads to predation of the herring. So those are some of the, I guess, the issues that are there right now with the existing pond.
So it would help the herring pond as well? The herring ladder run?
Correct.
Thank you for setting it up like this with the two choices and the advantages and disadvantages of each. Are there other questions?
What's the timeline for completion of the project?
So we're hoping to have the construction drawings completed and permitted by December of 2026. That is the deadline of our funding that we receive through NRCS. So right now, we're looking at the 30% stage, which would bring us to permitting level plans, to complete that by fall, early winter of this current calendar year. And then we would start the permitting process at that point. And it really is contingent on the permitting. As you saw in the matrix, there's a number of permits that we would have to obtain for the project, and that's really going to dictate the final schedule is how long it takes to complete that permitting.
The only thing I have is encouraging, and I'm sure other tribal members will say, you know, propagating indigenous plantings that reflect the area and region. I love how Red Brook, after the collapse, it kind of reclaimed itself, and you saw all the bull rush and, you know, cat and night tails and things that are indicative to the area as far as indigenous vegetated wetland species came back and thrived in the area. So always encouraging that. And Atlantic White Cedar, if the area is suitable, planting of some of those is always encouragable as well.
Okay. So from, do we need to take a vote? Do we need to vote on this? Or do we just need to acknowledge that you are?
Like the director mentioned, I just wanted it before the board, in case you had any questions or concerns. That's it.
So we're just authorizing you to reach out to the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Council and Tribal Chair?
Yes.
To make them aware?
Right.
So, good? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and approval of end-of-year transfers. Don Thayer, Finance Director?
Yes, if I could, Madam Chair.
Please.
The Finance Director is not here, because these are fairly routine end-of-year transfers. For the public's knowledge, I will articulate what they're all about. When the treasurer created the fiscal year 2025 budget, he was unsure if or when he would be permanently bonding a portion of our temporary debt. He budgeted what he estimated would be needed to pay interest on the temporary debt. However, during fiscal year 2025, the town permanently bonded some of that debt. When interest on the permanent debt became due in fiscal year 2025, the treasurer paid it from the correct account. This transfer will move the funds from the interest accounts associated with the temporary debt to the correct accounts associated with the permanent debt. And also, there's one from the Historical Commission. These funds are requested to cover a shortfall in the part-time salary account for the one employee who performs administrative work for the commission. This employee worked additional hours during the winter, which was approved by the commission. These additional hours created a small deficit in the account. They have the remaining funds within their expense budgets, so they are requesting a transfer of a portion of those funds to their salary budget to cover the deficit. These are the two requests that are before the board, and it's my understanding that the Finance Committee approved it while I was on vacation.
Do they have to be done individually?
That's a good question.
I don't think so. As long as we approve, as stated.
I think we've approved them both in the past, but no problems doing it independently.
Motion to transfer amounts as stated, $15,960 to $98,700, $3,100, from temporary interest accounts and transferred to the actual interest accounts, as stated?
Second.
Discussion? Mike?
Questions or, I have no questions, but may I ask a yes?
Would you like it? Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy? John?
Yes.
Tracy? And I'm a yes.
Motion to transfer $600 from the historic preservation technical expense to the Historical Commission temporary salary as stated.
Second.
Discussion. Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Review and approval of authorization for wastewater department to proceed with the use of site at Zero Gunter's Lane, Map 2, Parcel 170, 26 acres, R5 zoning, for wastewater use and to facilitate any subsequent hearings that may be required for this property. And we have our engineer, Mr. Mark Drainville, here to explain this.
Yes, thank you. Mark Drainville with GHD.
Ant waste water management superintendent. I apologize, I was looking that way.
Thank you. So I'm going to give a little bit of a nitrogen planning update. The focus today is on an area just north of Wakeby Pond. The intention for this project is nitrogen removal and phosphorus. So there's, as I think many of you know, there's a pocket of land up here just north of Wakeby Pond that is in the town of Mashpee. That's what I'm going to be speaking about. And so why this area? So there's several reasons why we're we're focused on this particular part of town. Number one, nitrogen. That's that's the foundation of all of the wastewater infrastructure in town. So this is an area that would benefit the town in its nitrogen removal goals. We did submit a project for funding through the state, and the Cape Cod Commission wrote a letter of support indicating that this is an area that would help the town achieve nitrogen goals. Secondly, is there's a secondary benefit in paying attention to this area, and that is phosphorus. So phosphorus is a nutrient that impacts freshwater bodies. Nitrogen impacts the coastal water bodies. So phosphorus and nitrogen are both found in septic system effluent, okay? The figure that I have off to the right is a is an excerpt from a diagnostic study for Mashpee-Wakeby Pond that was presented in December of last year. And this, what this figure shows is for the purple properties here, which are in Mashpee, those are properties that are contributing phosphorus to the pond. And the light or the lime green properties, which are in Sandwich, those are also contributing to contributing phosphorus to Wakeby Pond. So just going back to these, to this portion in Mashpee, the the secondary benefit I mentioned with with phosphorus is if we can contain the phosphorus in these properties, that would prevent phosphorus from entering the pond. So that's a secondary benefit. Have a couple of other benefits. I'm going to skip to the last one for a moment, and we have been having some very preliminary discussions with the town of Sandwich, and there may be some interest from the town in collaborating on having the town of Sandwich attend to their, some of their nitrogen issues and their phosphorus issues in this area, which would be, you know, a tremendous overall benefit to both the estuary and to the to the ponds also. So so that's that's something we're in discussions with the town. That's not happening, it wouldn't be happening now, but we're talking to them about this, okay? A fourth benefit is something that's called groundwater recharge. So the the treated wastewater effluent in town is ends up in the ground, and we need properties to be able to properly discharge that into the ground. It's, that's become the item that limits a lot of the the work that's being done, and this is an area that we feel that we can actually get a a permit. You know, we are trying to trying to attend to this issue in both Wacoit Bay and also in Pompanas Bay for future work. We haven't gotten that capacity yet, but this is an area we feel like we have it. So that's another benefit of this area. So these are the properties. The green properties are the ones that we would be looking to to sewer. We did do an evaluation of this area, looking at a couple of different options. One of them would be to put in a, what I call, a cluster system. So it's not a wastewater treatment plant like you have, like your municipal plant. It's more of a community treatment system, below grade, a lot less visible than your main facility. So we looked at one of those, which also has a high level of treatment, just like your main facility. We looked at sending that flow to your main facility, and we also looked at the potential of serving those properties with onsite septic systems. And the the most, the least costly option was the one where you can collect and treat in that area, primarily because it's a great distance from your main facility. You'd have to go into another town to get to the other facility. And also onsite systems do not treat for phosphorus. There aren't any approved systems yet. So this is the the primary, or the best option would be to put, like I said, a little cluster, what's called a cluster treatment system there in that area. Cluster system would be, this is, this is really just showing a box of how large it would be. This is a a large tract of town owned property where my cursor is tracing here. And there would also be sand beds. That's how the ground, the water ends up back in the ground. There is a vernal pool in this area, which we're mindful of and would be staying away from. And this, this is, this property is known as Zero Gunter's Lane. So the benefit of this project, there are several of them. One of them, the costs are very competitive to the alternatives. Nitrogen and phosphorus removal benefit the ponds and the coastal estuaries. Property is owned by the town. We did have a review of this property by the town's attorney, and they did determine that it is available for town use. The groundwater discharge permit seems to be attainable, provides an opportunity to collaborate with the town of Sandwich to enhance nitrogen and phosphorus removal in that area. And it also has a very advantageous schedule to achieve the nitrogen phosphorus goals. I mentioned that this project was received funding. We did submit last August to for funding, and this project was highly ranked. Not everybody gets funding. This, fewer than 50% of those who submitted got funding. And just as a reminder, the funding that you get is, you get a 25% principal forgiveness from the Cape and Islands Trust. You also get 6.7% principal forgiveness plus 0% financing. So that's the, that's the funding you've been getting and would continue to get with this, too. We do have to submit a 90% design for this project in October of 2025 to maintain the schedule with the state. The proposed project is a small satellite facility, cluster, small treatment system with a collection system and a local groundwater recharge. And as I mentioned, potentially to include the town of Sandwich. I mentioned that because we are mindful of that and would make sure that system's designed to accommodate a future connection. We're preparing the early stages of the design right now, and what we would like to do is start public outreach, which is one of the reasons why I'm before you today. So we are seeking your authorization to allow us to proceed with this site for wastewater use and to facilitate subsequent hearings or public meetings as would be needed for this site.
I have a couple of questions while you're here. Thank you very much. It was very clear. I just want to, I know that Sandwich has expressed interest, and my understanding is Sandwich has expressed interest based on primarily the nitrogen reduction or nitrogen reduction credits, because that's what they are bound to the state to meet their TMDLs with. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
Okay. And I didn't realize that we were only 50% within the higher level, higher range of the 50% of projects that were approved?
Yes. Yeah, and you were listed because of nitrogen. That's, that's the primary goal of the state is to fund these nitrogen projects, so.
So it's been reviewed by the state, and it's a nitrogen, for its nitrogen reduction?
Correct.
I had another quick question. Oh, I think you also mentioned that, and I don't expect you to be able to know all about this, but we do have a legal decision from KP Law with regard to?
I can comment on that. We do have a legal opinion that there are no restrictions as a result of, I think it was 30 years, they expired. So yes, we do have that.
Okay. All right. I'll let go to others, and then I have another question.
The only question I really have is, you know, so I did hear you say, Mark, that the, we're building it in a way that is expandable and for greater volume. I guess the question I have is, you know, have we communicated with Sandwich and, I mean, the cost of construction, if you do it all at once, instead of piecemeal, the construction costs are sometimes a little bit manageable and tolerable. So, you know, not incorporating those, the green areas to the left, to the west of Wakeby. I'm just wondering, you know, isn't it beneficial to factor those in from the onset? And has that been communicated to Sandwich? And has, have they taken a position on yes, no, maybe, or or anything like that?
So let me, so they, they have been very positive in their, in in our meetings with them about this. I will say that we are, and it's not, doesn't really cost much to do this. We are providing accommodations for that future expansion, just like your facility, your main facility is set up for expansions. That's kind of what this this would be. So we're, we're providing that ability so it can be expanded, even in the collection system also, to allow the town to tie in. We're looking at being able to do that, too. We're not at a place with Sandwich where they can commit to the infrastructure, and we're on a schedule with the SRF funding. So it's, it would be hard to marry those two at this point. I think it, we wouldn't be able to do that. At the time that we submitted for funding, we didn't have, we weren't at the same place that we are now with Sandwich, so.
I guess, you know, I don't know what Sandwich contributes to our nitrogen, to mitigate our nitrogen load presently. Because so much of these waters are collected here at the head and then make their way out to our bays, you know, they're contributing to our problem. And, you know, any reluctance to help address the issue, I just eager to hear Sandwich's position on any hesitation to address our problems.
May I?
Yeah, sure.
So it's right around 10%. I, I always mix the two up. It's eight for one bay, and it's 12 for another bay. So Sandwich is contributing right around 10. I think there is, based on conversations I've been part of, there's been a tremendous amount of interest. I know Sandwich's engineering company has been working or collaborating with GHD to look at the best way to present this to Sandwich, to look at how much nitrogen that this will remove in order to go to the voters of Sandwich and make this make sense for them. So I think there's a tremendous amount of interest to get to work towards the nitrogen mitigation or nitrogen credits on the part of Sandwich, based on the conversations I've been part of.
And may I add that I think also a lot of the accommodations we're looking at is how we site the plant. Instead of just maybe just dropping it directly in the middle of the property or the sand beds in the middle of property, if we know or have a high likelihood they're coming in, we'll try to push everything tight enough that we can make those expansions when they do decide to come onboard.
Would any of the expansion affect the vernal pool? Or put future expansion, all of that is accounted in already into?
Right now, we're having a survey done, but based on the information that we have, we are able to stay away from the vernal pool. A future expansion would potentially, I don't have something that shows you Sandwich above here, but that may require expansion into this, into Sandwich, okay? But no, the goal is we'd be staying out of the buffer, to the 150 foot buffer.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with the vernal, if I may, with the vernal pool, we're still, it's a certified vernal pool, so the town would have to follow both state regulations, what is it, CMR? 310 CMR 1004 is where vernal pools are defined, and also our local bylaws, 172 Regulation 23. Both of those afford 150 foot buffer. So we would be bound by those. Before we could move forward anyway, we need to keep that buffer from the vernal pool, which is how this is being designed. So we have to meet both state regs and town regs.
In fact, this, this is showing the 150, approximately the 150 foot buffer. So we're, that is our, you know, we're trying to stay well out of that, so.
I have one question.
Please.
If you could keep that previous slide up?
All right, this one?
Yes. So now, if the orange areas are your discharge areas, how does that affect the hydrology in saturating the soils in that area? Is that going to contribute more phosphorus to the lake?
So the treatment system would be removing, I want to say, probably 80% of the phosphorus. So we'd be putting in a phosphorus treatment. And then this location, given its distance from the pond, there would be some additional uptake once in the ground, too. So there's, there's a, two opportunities for phosphorus to be, to stay out of the pond. There would be monitoring that would need to be done to to monitor, but we would have a treatment system that would be taking out a significant amount of the phosphorus.
I'm just wondering, like, because all the, the hydrology of the area, all the water drains southwest, right? So I'm just wondering, as it saturates the ground, are you going to have leaching of, you know, septic tanks that are still in place if they're just abandoned? If that's going to saturate the soils and have any additional contribution as a result of a steady flow of effluent due to your discharge?
So you mentioned something about the existing septic systems?
Yes.
Sorry. Can you say that again?
Septic tanks and things that are over there now, existing residential, you know, on on each location, south of that area, is that additional flow going to saturate that and transport phosphorus to the pond?
So there would be very little phosphorus that would ultimately make its way down to the pond. The treatment system, this, this treatment system here, unlike a standard onsite septic system, this would be taking out a significant amount of the phosphorus. So what would go into the ground is going to be a lot less, and the ground is going to have some capacity to take up phosphorus. This location is significantly further away from the pond than the properties, than these properties, than these properties here. So we're talking about a treatment system that would be up here, or a discharge that would be up here, and the ground has a capacity to take up some of the phosphorus also, but most of it's going to be removed in the treatment system. That, that's one of the, I, sorry, I didn't mention that earlier, but this treatment system would take out a vast amount of nitrogen as well as phosphorus.
Which I do understand. I guess, I don't know if I'm explaining it correctly.
So, so the, the flow, I will, so I will say that the flow from, from the beds here, it goes down to Wakeby Pond. It goes, that's the flow direction.
Correct.
But there's a, there's a significant amount of phosphorus that's being taken out in the treatment system. There's some capacity in the ground also to take up some, but most of it's coming out in the treatment system. We're also adding the capability of additional phosphorus removal if needed, but we're putting some monitoring wells in. some monitoring wells in to monitor, to track this over time, and if needed, we could take phosphorus down even further, at the treatment system. So there'll be, there'll be a real, real good opportunity to manage phosphorus in this area.
Mark, if I may, if you look at the map, also, that purple area is, the areas that were identified as directly contributing phosphorus, if you notice, they're already budding the pond. What we're doing is we're conveying it out into those green areas that don't contribute, so making that phosphorus far enough away that most of it will re, what we put back in will reabsorb. But it shouldn't be really any additional phosphorus or minimal, because most of that area is built out. Most lots do have houses on it, so the worst we've looked at is possible accessory dwellings. So between the combination of phosphorus removal and the natural absorption of the land, because we're far enough away, it'll greatly reduce the project, which will also help with the alum treatment, because the alum treatment's a great first step, but this will prevent us from having to redo that same step every couple of years, dumping millions of dollars into more alum treatments. This is more of a solution than a Band-Aid.
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is if it would be incorrigible to, rather than abandon in place and any existing septics, if we were to kind of encourage or figure out funding to remove them, to remediate phosphorus saturated soils around existing structures, so that the additional hydrology doesn't further contribute after we clean the water, contribute through saturation to the pond impediments? Just for, you know, where the hydrology is going to flow from a constant flow of discharge as affluent?
I understand your question. I don't have a good answer for, for it. But so let's, let me, I'll have to explore that to see if that's, see what can be done with that. But I understand your question now, yeah.
Can I move to John?
So as far as, kind of piggybacking a little bit, on the old systems, those going to be, they were going to be removed, I'm assuming, right? So, or, I mean, collapse, like, if we do in Phase One and Phase Two, they're, the old systems are removed or built?
Yeah, the Title V, it's collapse in place, or you can drill it and fill it with sand, or you can completely remove the unit.
Okay.
Those are the three options in, in the code.
And if my, I remember years ago, I brought up cesspools. Are there any cesspools in that purple area? I don't know.
I do not know. I can ask the board to help.
So either way, there will be, we'll, we'll take care of that problem.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, I believe there were a few, and so that'll be taken care of. Again, just looking at the plan, I, I like the idea that it's, you know, away from, you know, houses and things like that. I mean, it's, no one wants that in their backyard, if you will, so. And again, you're talking about, it's, you know, even if it was, we're talking about cleaning the environment, so. And I like the idea of we're talking about nitrogen and phosphorus. That's, that's a win-win right there. So. Other questions?
Other questions? I don't think so.
Okay.
So what you're, what you're asking us to do is to approve authorization for the wastewater department to proceed with the use of site at Zero Gunter's Lane, Map 2, Parcel 170, 26 acres, R5 zoning for wastewater use, and to facilitate any subsequent hearings that may be required for this property. Correct?
So move?
Second.
Discussion?
That would make it unanimous.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jared. We have next, an update from Mashpee Human Services Committee.
Hi, Lynn Barbie. I am the Chair of the Human Services Committee, and we have with us this evening a really honored guest, someone who many of you know, who has been a long-term, in current sustainer and bedrock of all kinds of human services in our town. But I'm going to let him introduce himself. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Fantasia.
I'm here again, on a different mission this time. It's good to see two new faces on the board. For the record, Frank Fantasia, Knight Fairway Knob, and I'm here representing the Human Services Committee, especially as it relates to the subcommittee that is charged with recommending disbursement of funds from the statewide opioid settlement fund. Just as a matter of information, I was formerly a member of the Home Human Services Committee many, many years ago. This is just a quick overview. I won't take too much of your time. As you know, as a result of the, probably the worst medical event that has happened in this country, with the exception of the pandemic, we suffered, for many, many reasons, an opioid pandemic second to none that we know in our lifetime. And as a result of some legal action taken by Attorney Generals in different states, especially led by our current governor, when she was the AG, started the ball rolling, and everybody, all the other states kind of jumped on. And at the end of the day, they became very successful in winning suits against the pharma companies who were pushing these drugs in many different ways. Coincidentally, I have read up on it over the years, and it's, it's an amazing story, a sad story, how people got addicted and you can't, you can't, as they started to do at the beginning, turn the responsibility back on the user when the companies were pushing this thing to beat the ban. So that's just a little background on that. Now, statewide opioid recovery and remediation fund, now, this question is on the final exam, so pay close attention to this paragraph, okay? The statewide opioid recovery and remediation fund is overseen by the Commonwealth's Executive Office of Health and Human Services, together with a council comprised of 10 municipal appointees by the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and 10 state appointees qualified by experience and expertise regarding opioid use disorder. Now, if you take nothing else away from this presentation, if somebody asked you to define bureaucracy, you have my permission to use this paragraph, because I, it's mind-boggling. Anyway, it works for us. According to the settlement agreements between the drug companies and the Commonwealth, Mashpee is scheduled to receive $727,000 over a six-year period. Mashpee was an early adopter and participant in building a business model to manage the ongoing disbursement of funds received from the Commonwealth. We can credit Gail Wilson and the Human Services Committee for carrying out this initiative. In fact, there are some towns on the Cape that have not begun this process yet. We have been functioning for three years, starting in 2023. So my question was, as a, in my other life, a financier, where's the money in with those towns that haven't even started this? It's sitting in some depository account, doing nothing. It belongs back in the community. We are doing that in the town of Mashpee. The Commonwealth's stated purpose, and this is really at the meat of what we're doing, of the abatement funds is to address four areas. First, substance use disorder prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and of course, recovery. The applicants that come to us are vetted according to their impact on the citizens of Mashpee in any one or a combination of all three of these areas. Just to give you a flavor for what, what we've been going on here in terms of numbers, in 2023, Mashpee distributed $112,500. In 2024, $161,500 was dispersed. And in 2025, this current year, $139,000, for a grand total of $413,000. As I stated earlier, the commitment to the town amounts to $727,000 over a period of six years. That puts us at about 57% halfway in terms of both dollars expended and a time elapsed. So, because we're into this for three years now. This year was an interesting year, because we received 15 applications from various This is a result of more individuals and organizations becoming aware of the program. This year also represented the largest total dollar amount requested. Applications totaled $339,000. Unfortunately, we only had enough funds available to satisfy $139,000 of those requests, so we were $200,000 short. And the committee's objective was to spread the funds among as many organizations that qualified. Those that are not only qualified, but had a tendency to have the biggest impact in the community as a whole. We managed to help 11 organizations of the 15 applicants this year. And I can confidently report that we did the very best with what was available to us. You can imagine, as the number of dollars requested grows, the vetting of applicants becomes more and more challenging. Now, the town operates under the terms of an agreement from the Commonwealth, which among other things requires that we submit detailed annual reports of all disbursements from the funds allocated to the town. The total document is approximately nine pages in length and is quite detailed. The committee is quite diligent in assuring we meet all the criteria contained in this agreement. This, this agreement, of course, is on file here in this building, if any of you wanted to review it. I wasn't going to take the time to do that tonight. And one of the issues we continue to deal with is the timing of the receipt of funds from the Commonwealth. In a business sense, we would call this cash flow. The town has no control over the situation, nor does the Commonwealth. You can imagine the many settlement agreements that were negotiated with a number of pharma companies and others, all contain different payment schedules. You can just imagine the complexity of the settlements across the country. And this is further compounded by each state striking their own deals along the way. So it's, it's an enormous juggernaut of, of agreements that these companies have made with the various states. So that's about it in a nutshell. I would like to thank the board for including, including the Human Services Committee on your agenda this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you very, very much. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. Are there questions, Town Manager?
I just want to add, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Attorney Pacastella, who was legal counsel for the town, provided us with a lot of information relative to the subject matter. Police, fire, and human services provided us with a lot of data that was able to really cross a lot of Ts and dot a lot of Is in regards to these issues. And obviously, the Human Services Committee has done a wonderful job in addressing this very sensitive and desperate subject.
Thank you. Questions?
Show me the money. We need more money. Well, that's, that part of it's kind of etched in stone. We can't, we can't control that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Update on local traffic concerns, Mr. Colton Atkinson?
First, Colton, I want to apologize for the typo with your name. We know your name's Atkinson. Thank you.
Thanks for having me today. I mostly wanted to come here because I think that this is kind of a topic that takes a little more than three minutes and a little more of a conversation than the public comment typically allows. So to kind of give you a framework of what I'm going to go through today, first, I'll give you a little bit of a background on the importance of multimodal infrastructure in the town, and why we should make Mashpee that way, and then go into the current traffic statistics for the town, and then go into our complete streets policy, which was passed by the board back in 2018, and then talk about a case for kind of reevaluating the speed limits throughout the town, specifically on the high-risk network and high-entry network, which is in the packet before you, but we'll go through that together in a bit. And then finally, take a look at the Old Barnstable Traffic Study, which was conducted and presented to the board a little over a year ago, and it's kind of put on pause to be further looked at, and I don't think has been since. So starting off, I'll give you kind of four reasons for why multimodal infrastructure is important to the town. The first one being just that it's good for the environment. So beyond just the local emissions and particulate pollution that comes from cars, which would be improved with the transition to electric vehicles, there have been studies in the previous administration, which actually believed in climate change, their highway administrator said himself that the US cannot meet its climate goals without also, in addition to transitioning to electric vehicles, reducing our vehicle miles traveled, which means taking some of the trips which are currently done by vehicle and doing them by walking, or by biking, or by transport, public transportation. The second reason that we should make this shift is the cost of living crisis that we have. We talk a lot in this town about the affordable housing crisis, but the burden of car ownership is a unrecognized burden that plays a fairly substantial part, much like the cost of living crisis in this town. So the AAA has done studies that have shown that, on average, car ownership in the US costs about $12,000 a year. So if you think of a family that has two vehicles, that could, if the transportation infrastructure was there, instead be a one-vehicle family, you may not have the affordable housing built for them, but you have $12,000 more in their pocket that they're able to spend on other needs, like housing or food. Then third, it's accessibility. So if you haven't reached the age of 16 yet, you're not able to drive on the streets. So in a lot of the town, you can't really get around safely until you're 16 years old and have a vehicle that you can travel in. And then we're still an aging community as well, and for people that are over the age of 65, 20% of them are unable to drive a vehicle. So that means that as you're aging, when you lose the physical ability to drive in a car, you're not going to be able to continue to live in your own home without significant external support, which means that people will be forced to move into nursing homes sooner than they otherwise would if they had local multimodal infrastructure available to them. And then finally, and this is kind of the most significant, is that this is what the town of Mashpee has said that they're interested in having in a town. When we did the LCP, the Local Comprehensive Plan, study, we asked the town in a survey what it was that they wanted, and 76% of the town said that they either strongly or somewhat supported increased active transportation, and then another 91% said that they considered sidewalks and crosswalks, somewhat are very important to Mashpee, and 81% said the same of bicycle paths. So that's kind of the background of what multimodal infrastructure can do for the town and why it's important to us. So now we'll start going through the packet that we have in front of us. So the first page here, this is the Cape Cod Commission's, and if at any point you guys have any questions about anything I'm talking about, feel free to stop me and we can go through that, because there's kind of a lot in here. This is the Cape Cod Commission's Vision Zero Plan, which This is the Cape Cod Commission's Vision Zero Plan, which they just developed and passed this past month. So on the front page here, you can see the number of crash statistics for our town, as well as fatal crashes and serious injuries. And so when we're talking about serious injuries, we're talking about injuries that will have a permanent lasting impact on somebody's quality of life. And then I also kind of think that they might be understating the amount of total crashes that we have because in the annual report that the police department passed this past year, they said that they responded to 518 crashes that had either personal injury or $1,000 worth of damage. And that's almost twice as much as the per-year annual crashes that's reported in this report here. And then if you go to the next page, this kind of gives you an idea of just where those high-risk networks and high-injury networks are in our town. And it's no real surprise, those are where cars are traveling frequently and quickly. So Route 130, Route 151, Route 28, Great Neck Road North and South, and then some of the other highly trafficked areas. So that's kind of an idea of the current situation of traffic and roadway safety in our town. So if you flip to the next page, this is the Complete Streets policy that was passed by the Select Board back in 2018. So in general, the Complete Streets policy is to kind of direct the town to develop a roadway network that focuses on all roadway users. So that's pedestrians, bicyclists, motor vehicles, transportation, emergency vehicles, and freight traffic. One of the points of this first page I'd like to highlight for you is the last paragraph where I started next to it. So I'll read this. "Complete Streets Design Recommendations Shall Be Incorporated Into All Publicly and Privately Funded Projects As Appropriate. All transportation infrastructure and street design projects requiring funding or approval by the town, as well as projects funded by the state and federal government, such as Chapter 90 Funds, Transportation Improvement Program, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, Community Development Block Grants, and other state and funderal funds for street and infrastructure design shall adhere to the town's Mashpee's Complete Streets policy." So that's the first page of this. The last page here, I skipped the middle two because they kind of just went a little more into detail. But the next page in the packet, it talks about the ways we can evaluate the effectiveness. And in there, it says that we should be doing a report on our progress that we've made every year. So I did reach out to the town, and they admitted that they haven't necessarily been given those reports every year, but they are preparing to give you a five-year report in the near future. And Ms. Laurent was kind enough to provide me the contents of what that will be towards the rest of the projects that we've got on the prioritization plan. And so that's on the next page that we have here. And this is kind of where I'd like to first spend the most time. So this is the Complete Streets five-year update. It's based on the data that's in the Complete Streets prioritization plan, which was created and updated in March of last year. And it's sorted here by project. So on the left, it's got the priority, and that's 1 to 22. But there's only 20 projects here. There were a couple of projects which I think have been scrapped from the plan. And then it has a little bit of detail about the project itself. It has the cost, the desired construction date, and then the progress that we've made on that. So when you look here, you'll see that most of the projects are desired to be started by June of next year, but significantly fewer have actually been started. Several of them have started the design process, and I think five of them have actually been fully completed. So when we sum up the amount of money that's been allocated to projects that are fully complete, we're sitting at just under $200,000 that we've committed to the Complete Streets projects, which have gone and helped make our roads safer. And then you have the unfunded portions. And when I was talking to Ms. Laurent earlier, she mentioned that these project costs are likely a substantial underestimate of what the actual projects are going to cost. My assumption is, when this was being developed, they used a default average that the state has developed of $400,000 per mile for sidewalks and shared-use paths. And that's not necessarily always applicable, and I think in our region, we're likely to see significantly higher costs than that. Notably, you can see the Route 151 project. It's the $32 million project, which, when it was actually bid out, was $24 million. That also included a bunch of roadway design stuffs that wasn't entirely for the three odd miles of pavement that's being put down for sidewalks and shared-use paths. But it does indicate that we'll probably have substantially higher amounts of funds required to actually complete these projects. And so this is kind of where I'd first like to ask you how we can bridge this gap between what we've planned and what we're actually funding. Because we're seeing a significant shortfall, and I think that there might be an overreliance on grants and other sources of fundings. And I think if we're seeing anything from the federal government these days, it's that we kind of are going to be a little more responsible for our own town. We can't rely on the federal grants quite as much as we have been before. So I'll open up to you if any of you have thoughts or ideas of where this disconnect between what we've planned and what we've directed the town to do and what we've actually been funding over the years that we've actually accomplished.
Can I start with a question?
Yeah.
And that's just, this is a simple question about the chart itself. You list the project and the priority, the cost, and then you have progress. Are you talking about progress to finishing a complete street project or a progress in finishing the project as designed? I'm probably not.
So this is progress towards the completion of that project. So each of these are like kind of minor projects towards the town's overall goal. So if you just look at the first one, the Orchard Road Safety Speed Feedback Sign, that one was completed. We installed the feedback sign on that. So that was completed back, I think, 2022.
So these aren't projects, they're not roads completed. They're roads that are completed that meet the complete streets as...
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Each of these projects was something that, when the town developed their plan for what we would do to meet the town's Complete Streets projects, we did that, and we finalized it, I think, back in 2020. And these were the projects that, when we completed all of these, that would have been like, okay, we have met what the town wanted back in 2020. Doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't still room for improvement once we've completed these, because as the town continues to develop, we might identify new needs or new areas that need increased development. For example, later on, we'll talk about the Old Barnstable Project. In this proposal that we created back in 2020, the plan was just to extend the shared-use path from where it exists right now, to I believe Palmer Road, which spans about half the distance of the Old Barnstable Lowell Road project. And when that was evaluated by the traffic audit that we did for the 209 Old Barnstable Affordable Housing Plan, they identified the entire length as needing a sidewalk or shared-use path along it, and said that that could actually help traffic if we did implement that. So this likely does need to be updated over time, but I think it is a strong start.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there other questions? Do you want to continue?
Yeah, I'll continue. So if you go onto the next page, this kind of leads into the importance of the setting safe speeds throughout our town. So this was also in the Cape Cod Commission's Vision Zero Action Plan. And it shows the difference in fatality risk for vehicles traveling at different speeds. So if you have a pedestrian who's hit by a vehicle traveling at 20 miles per hour, they've got a 5% chance of that being a fatal incident, whereas at 40 miles per hour, it's an 85% chance of being a fatal accident. So there's a 17-fold increase in the risk of fatality based on vehicle speed. And this is likely only getting worse as vehicles become larger, as they have more mass that they're imposing upon people. And then on the next page, the Vision Zero Action Plan continues, showing that not only are fatalities more like, or crashes more likely to cause fatalities, but you're also more likely to have crashes when vehicles are traveling at a higher speed. And that's because you're not able to see as much in your peripheral shrinks, to only be able to focus on what's directly in front of you when you're traveling at faster speeds, as well as obviously shorter stopping distances. So with that in mind, a couple of years ago, we had Quinnequisset Road, the speed limit increased on it to 45 miles per hour based on a speed that had been set back in 1972. And because that speed limit changed to something that was higher, we recognized that it wasn't fit for what the town was today. But I don't think we've done that same analysis for the rest of the town, where speed limits have stayed where they are, but we've developed the town around that. So I would suggest that we should take a look at every road that's on our high-risk network or our high-injury network, and we should evaluate if that speed limit is really still applicable today, or if it's a speed limit that we set three decades ago and we didn't really readdress when we developed significantly along that road. I mean, I think of Route 151 and Route 130, where you've got considerable residential buildup along those roads, and it's 45, 50 miles an hour along 151, where you've got significant numbers of cutouts for cars turning on and off. Sure, maybe the stretch between Old Barnstable Road and Jobbs Fishing Road, that probably makes sense because there's not the cross-traffic for people and vehicles to enter that roadway. But we have considerable roadside cutouts for vehicles to enter the road, or like on Route 130, you've got crosswalks for people to transit across, where the shared-use paths switches from one side of the road to the other. But you've got a 45 mile an hour speed limit along that road. So you just have to be hoping that people are paying attention, otherwise you're going to have a fatal accident there. So that would be my pitch for that. And then continuing on with the packet, if you don't have any questions about that, this is the Barnstable Traffic Study. And I've only really included the recommendations portion here. And then on the third page of that, there is the actual traffic count that they performed. So starting with the first page, this is the recommendations portion for the off-site improvements that should be made, that they thought should be made to the roadway. And you'll have things such as trimming the vegetation, installing curve warning signs, chevrons along the road to help indicate the direction that it's turning, speed feedback signs, reducing the width of portions where roads are intersecting, as well as enhancing the crosswalks, and, like I mentioned earlier, adding a sidewalk along the entire length of it. And we have this study that was conducted a year ago and presented to this board, and we kind of just said, okay, well, we'll have to stop and think about it. But then we never brought it back to the agenda. And if you look at the next page, if, we didn't get to this in the presentation because it was a little boring and it was running along a little long. But on page 182 of that report, they did a traffic count, and they provided the information of the vehicles that were traveling along this road. And when you look at the grand total, which I've boxed in the bottom row there, it shows you how many vehicles were traveling at different speeds. So if you've traveled along Old Barnstable Road, you know that that is not a safe road to be going greater than 35, 40 miles an hour on. Yet, in the two days that they did traffic counts and accounted for every vehicle transiting along there, you had four people that were going over 60 miles an hour. That is insane and dangerous. And you heard that from the people who sat here and talked about how dangerous their roadway was for about an hour. And this is the data to support their experience that shows that that roadway is not safe, and we need to be implementing the recommendations that they provided in that report. Similarly, but kind of off on a different tangent, the last page here, these are the recommendations from the Eastern Corridor Study, which is Route 28, which was performed back in 2018. And I would hazard a guess that most of these have not been implemented, even though this study was enacted back in 2018, I believe. And you'll also note that the top recommendation here is to conduct a speed study of the road. We need to be reevaluating these roadways, and we need to be implementing the recommendations that we get from our traffic reports when we conduct them. Otherwise, we're spending tens of thousands of dollars to have a piece of paper that sits on the town website. And that is all I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much for coming and presenting such a thorough presentation in all the materials. I don't know if there are questions.
Just a couple of... Oh, I'm sorry. A couple of things I just want to mention, and I know the DPW director is here, but I don't believe we would have any control over Route 130 or 151 in terms of speed.
Those are town, but we still have to follow state statute.
That's what I mean, state statute, as far as the process is concerned. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in 2005, we had five fatalities out there on Route 130. And we were taking a look at the possibility of conducting such a study. And based on the percentile of the average and the traffic surveys and everything else, we were concerned that it was going to result in a higher speed. I believe that was the concern back then. So although I really appreciate and value some of the data, there is a formula that does cause a little bit of concern in terms of process. And I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
To that point, I don't mean to interrupt, but I would not recommend using the method that the state uses when we, for the roads that we have sole discretion of. There's a method that the state uses called the 85th percentile.
Yes.
Basically says that whatever the 85th percentile car, the car going the 85th fastest out of 100 cars goes, that's the speed that we should set for a road. And that is not the way it should be done. It should be done based on what the traffic engineers say is a good speed based on the roadway's design. When you look at the Old Barnstable Road report, he even noted that the speeds vehicles were traveling, which is what the 85th percentile would change that road to if we were to decide to use it, was an unsafe speed for that road. So if we do go about trying to reevaluate it for our town's roads that we solely control, I would not use that 85th percentile.
And all I was pointing out, Madam Chair, is that exactly what the gentleman just referred to is that 85th percentile is the concern that we had back in 2005. And I agree, any roads that we would have local control over, I certainly would not suggest that. But at the same time, I believe we are bound by using the formula that the state has, unless I'm mistaken. No, I'm not. So again, it's a catch-22. I think we want to see the speed limits dropped. But at the same time, because of the formula that the gentleman just referred to, there is a danger there that you're going to get just the opposite effect. Instead of the speed being reduced, it's going to be actually increased. So that is the concern that we've dealt with historically. I agree with you. I wouldn't use that formula, but at the same time, we can't violate the state law. There are other states where the Select Board have total control and jurisdiction over local streets, and I wish that existed here, but it doesn't.
And that's for 28, 151, and 130?
It's for any town road. So Route 28 is a state road, so the state would set that, but they follow that rule as well. Any town road has to follow that statute.
Thank you.
Whether it's Route 130 or Great Neck Road North, Quinnequisset Ave. So if I may, so Quinnequisset Ave, yes, the speed limits were set back in the '70s, as were most of the speed limits in town. When DPW actually posted the regulatory speed limits, that's when it got the attention of the residents. We actually had to petition Mass DOT to rescind the regulation. We actually had to petition MassDOT to rescind the regulation, which then dropped it to the statutory speed limit, which is defined as either rural or thickly settled. And then thickly settled is a 30 mile per hour, which is what Quiniquis is now, but it changes the enforcement ability of the police by doing that. So that's always the compromise is it can reduce the speed, but they have to follow different rules for enforcing that speed.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information. I do feel like some of the recommendations seem relatively straightforward. I mean, I do think a lot of times it does come down to funds and how you would, you know, pay for all these projects, and right now, a lot of local residents are, you know, taking on sewer-ing and things like that. So I think, I'm, thank you for all this data. I'd love to marinate and digest it a little bit, but I personally, you know, agree, like some of the crosswalks, you know, I'm unsure, I would love to see more crosswalks that have, you know, they're lighting up, so it's just more visible. There are some pretty scary roads because of the miles per hour, and then really, it's just the trust, as you're saying, you're just trusting that people are paying attention. There's some crosswalks that are like on Catuit Road where, you know, part of it is a long straightaway, and I think the speed limit's like 40 miles per hour on that road or something, so. And a lot of children are on there, and then you mentioned multiple modes. I've seen a lot of an increase in children because they're not 16, using their like electric bikes and electric scooters. Some of those go really fast, and there's not always adequate, you know, spaces all, you know, across town, like direct cut-throughs, I guess, for young people to use. So I've got a 12-year-old, so I'm kind of, you know, in the know of how that's all rolling out right now in the summertime. So thank you for this data, and I look forward to reading it more thoroughly.
And when it comes to funding, like I think we could get a little more inventive with how we use the town's funding as well. I mean, we have the CPC, which we could use to kind of fund this as recreational projects because if it's a shared-use path that people can go cycling on, that can be justified as a recreational fund.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation and your handouts and for being here tonight. Thank you.
I do appreciate your passion and appreciate all of the information that you've provided and appreciate your commitment to seeing this through.
Of course. Thank you all.
Thank you.
If I may, before you leave this subject.
Please.
Just as mentioned, our five-year plan was developed back in 2020. We are just starting the process for updating, doing a five-year update on that plan. So we will be working on that over the next several months and bringing a draft updated plan before the board, probably in early fall.
That's for the complete roads and specifically?
The complete streets prioritization plan.
Okay.
Will that, will that provide a status on some of the projects that listed in?
So projects that are complete will drop off and we'll add. What the state recommends is that we maintain a list of about 20 projects. That's not to say that those 20 projects will be completed in five years, but at least to have a list of 20 projects that you can pull from. There are grant funding opportunities through the state if the, if the project is listed on that plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have review of application for one-day liquor license, August 1, 2025, Latavala, Stephanie Viva, Mashpee Chamber Director. I don't think we need Stephanie here tonight, right?
No, they generally, on these, they were annual events, so.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the one-day liquor license, all alcohol for Latavala, which is going to be on August 1, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And for all that are not aware, it's a really great community event. Lot of fun.
It is. Do you second? Discussion? Tracy? Yes. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Review of applications for temporary sign permits, Latavala, Stephanie Viva, Mashpee Chamber Director. And you want to take these together? Hazardous waste collection, Catherine Laurent, Director of Public Works.
And if I could just put a plug in for the hazardous waste collection. So that is August 16 at the middle high school, from 9 until 1. It is free for Mashpee residents as well as other residents of the Cape Cod. We are a reciprocal community. At the collection, we will also be continuing to offer our free shredding, secure document shredding for Mashpee residents, as well as MECC will be there with their textile collection. So all great things to encourage reuse and recycling.
Unless somebody sees a reason to separate these, I would take a motion to approve both.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you. Acceptance of Board and Committee Resignations. Paula Peters, Affordable Housing Committee, term expires June 30, 2025. Accept a motion to accept the resignation of Paula Peters with a letter of appreciation and regret.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Resignation of Jennifer McLarnan, Mashpee Cable and Advanced Technology Board, term expires June 30, 2025. Motion to accept the resignation with a letter of appreciation and regret.
So moved.
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next, we have review and approval of annual board and committee reappointments. Before we do that, I would like to just extend great thanks to the Office of the Town Manager and to Christine and Tammy for spending the time to get this in such good shape for us. They did a really nice job, and I appreciate it. So I assume everybody's had time to look at it? Okay. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Was the school committee supposed to be on here?
I'm sorry.
Did I miss the school committee on here? Was that supposed to be on here?
We don't, no.
Their listing? Okay.
Yeah. That would be separate.
Separate list. Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right. Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
John? Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next, we have discussion of comments regarding On Commons LLC application, MHID number 1277, Lot 14, Jobs Fishing Road. If it would be okay with us others, I'd like us, for people who may be watching at home, or even for all of us to kind of go through the process that 40B spells out, so we'll see where we are in that process, it'll only take a minute. So we're in the middle of what the Chapter 40B Handbook refers to as a pre-qualification process. It's kind of the entry to a comprehensive permit. So after receiving a project eligibility application, which is the On Commons LLC application, that has to be put, the application is on the town website, the subsidizing agency, in this case, is Mass Housing, notifies the chief elected official, the Select Board, and schedules a site visit. The Select Board posts the notice and the application on the community's website and seeks comments from municipal boards and departments. The Select Board, according to the guidelines, should try to act as a clearinghouse for comments on the application. This comment period provides an opportunity for elected officials to lead a constructive conversation about 40B and organize a coherent response for the community. So Mass Housing, once they receive that response, and our response has to go in on July 29, Mass Housing will issue a decision at the close of that comment period. The time needed to make a decision varies by each agency. Mass Housing is only one of the agencies, and also the project's consistency with the determination and findings required in the 40B regs. Once that decision is issued, the developer, the ZBA, and the Select Board will receive that. Okay? So that's why the Select Board is hearing comments and discussing this. It goes to the ZBA as the second part of the process. Very quickly, to give you a timeline, during the last, during the first week of June, we received a project eligibility application for On Commons LLC, and within days, we posted the notice and the application as required on our website. The On Commons LLC application consists of 65 units on 1.86 acres of land. The 65 units are contained in one four-story building located on the corner of Route 28 in Jobs Fishing Road, approximately 40 feet from each street. There was a site visit that took place on June 18. It was attended by the town fire chief, members of the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Committee, Conservation, the Health Department, Human Services, the Wastewater Department, the Sewer Commission, Environmental Oversight Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, and the Mashpee Cable and Advanced Technology Advisory Board. I think I have everybody there. To meet our established deadlines, comments based on the application and the site visit were accepted by the Office of the Town Planner until the end of the day on July 7. Those comments are in your packet, and that's what we need to discuss tonight. They include comments from the Chief of the Fire Department, members of the Select Board, Planning Board, Affordable Housing, ZBA, CPC, the Sewer Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Environmental Oversight Committee, the Health and Wastewater Departments, and the Cable and Advanced Technology Advisory Board, as well as the Historical Commission and from two private residents. All right. So pursuant to the process that's outlined in 40B, this comment period provides an opportunity for this board to lead a constructive conversation about 40B and organize a coherent response for the, for the community. Our letter and the compiled comments must be received by the state no later than July 29. So our task tonight is to discuss the comments, so we're prepared to approve the letter that's drafted for us in the Town Planner, I believe, is taking the lead in drafting that letter based on our guidance. We need to approve that with minimal edits on the June 28 meeting, I'm sorry, July 28 meeting, in order to meet the deadlines. And I'm almost done. There's broad consensus within the comments received, and just some of this, I think it's clear from all of the comments, or most of the comments, that the town of Mashpee needs more affordable housing and that the commenters recognize this. The proposed project is 25% affordable housing, which is 17 units. Also, many of the comments suggested that locating this housing project in a sewer service area is a positive. The letters in your packet, however, contain many concerns in the areas of health, safety, open space, building site and design. So I know you've all had the opportunity to review these. If you'd like to give each of you the opportunity to speak about the comments you have and any additional comments that are relevant, so we capture the board's consensus so that the Town Planner can draft a letter with the, with the Town Manager and if you approve, the Chair of the Select Board, and bring that back for your review on the 28th. So does that make sense? So we're, the process is really well outlined for us, and for that reason, I want us to have this discussion tonight. So I've said enough. If anybody else would like to begin?
For me, I think, you know, the comments that are captured here and before us tonight, there was a lot of different issues raised. I think they were meaningful, they were well-presented, they raise a lot of concerns. And I think the site suitability for something that large, size and scale, there was a lot of concerns raised about public safety. The Fire Department's comments were duly noted with proper egress around the facility. I don't know how they can mitigate that, but, you know, I think that they're going to have to go back to the drawing board somewhat. That was one of the major concerns that really jumped out at me is how do, how do we, you know, safely address potential fires and of a facility that size with that many people living in it? The other one was that kind of really resonated with me is the egress. Having that entrance right across the street from Cape Cod First Citizens, I think it's going to create quite a bit of congestion in that area, entering on and off of 28. I think, I don't know how they would mitigate that as proposed. The other one that resonated with me was the, you know, lack of a playground facility in the area and the limited open space as a result. I think they counted some of the parking lot as open space and talked about potentially redesigning some of that. I think an apartment building that size with low income should have some sort of recreational facility for the children in an affordable housing unit. That, and then there was additional comments that were made that some of the units, and I hadn't thought of this on my own, but the addition, having some of the affordability restricted, restrictions on there. I would hate to have a facility built like this, and then the apartments are sold off or anything like that, and then, you know, we lose those affordable units. So income-restricted affordable units, I think is essential and needs to be conditioned as part of it. The last thing that was a concern for me is the height. The height was, you know, that height, we don't have a four-story building, for all intents and purposes. I think that the area that we're looking at for this development, the frontage is going to be on 28, you're going to be looking at four stories. We don't have a four-story building in town that I'm aware of, unless I'm overlooking something, and, you know, that, that's, I think it sets a very negative precedent, especially where this is being proposed by our zoning board chair, his company. And so that, that was another concern that I have. I don't want to set a precedent for Mashpee comments to come back and say, you know, well, we already have existing four-story structures as a result of this project being approved. I'm really not comfortable with that.
Thank you.
I do have a, just a brief one. I'm not really, again, the height of the building. I, didn't we, I don't know what, I guess, our capacity is with the new ladder that we did approve last year, or time flies when you're having fun.
We do not have the extended ladder truck that we used to have, but we do have a replacement. I don't know what the capacity is off the top of my head, but I can find that out.
I mean, that's the part, it's just a clarification because it states.
But there are comments in there from the fire chief.
In here, the chief says that the ladder will not reach the peak.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, is, and that's what I'm just kind of, just clarification on, is it, because didn't we order the new truck? Is it saying we don't have it now, but it's the one that's coming in six months?
We did authorize one. All I'm saying is, as it is referenced in that packet that you have, it will not reach it. I just don't know the capacity of it off the top of my head in terms of what it will reach, but it won't reach that.
No.
The new truck?
Yes, that's my understanding.
That's, I just would, like, I wouldn't mind a little clarification on what the new truck, is it, are they stating, right, present?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
I can get that for you.
Did you, but you found that, right? He says, additionally, the Mashpee Fire Department's ladder truck would not be able to reach any portion of the building's ridgeline at the proposed height, which presents a serious life safety concern. So, that's.
Yeah, I just, and you, again, it's, you're talking ridgeline 55 feet. I just want, I'm just curious, clarification on.
Won't reach it.
Can we reach the fourth floor, but we just can't get to the 55 feet?
It won't reach that, that's all I know.
I just don't know.
He calls it a, a serious life safety concern, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I, I agree. In fact, that's the only thing I'm highlighting is serious. If it's a safety concern, it's a safety concern, that's.
Gotcha.
Then he goes, then he goes on to say that, like, from the 28th side, because of the wires and things, he, they wouldn't be able to reach either, I think, in, in the comments.
Because of the proximity to the wires and getting up, yeah.
Without an egress that goes completely around the structure.
John, do you have?
That was my, I mean, it was, I mean, a lot of it's in print with the questions, and that's public information, right? So.
Yes, yes.
As far as, everything's in the packet?
Anything in your packet's public information.
And, and all of these comments will go individually along with the letter that's written.
Right.
When we submit them with KP Law. Go ahead.
Comments, I was waiting to see if anyone else also had some, but I was able to read through this packet, and what really stood out to me was kind of the synergy. So, it seems like collectively, people are very aware of the housing crisis and the affordability of housing, and also, there is concern to, you know, still keep the safety of residents and also the character of the town. I think that those are the key themes that really stood out to me. I, I went to the site visit, and it was really difficult to conceptualize, just based on where the lot is located. It was, you know, really, truly, the setback didn't seem that far from the main road, that's a main, main intersection. It looks like the proposal is really geared towards families. There's three-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and I couldn't quite conceptualize having young families there with, you know, kind of no recreational space, or, you know, folks could, I guess, you know, walk to the commons or something safe behind the building, but it's really, truly very close to the road on Route 28, and I did not see a design for recreational space for, you know, any type of, you know, playground or leisurely outdoor activity, kind of quality-of-life question. And also noted that there, the proposal has two, only two accessible units proposed, which I, I think, you know, it's only two, and I'm not sure if that's part of the 17 affordable units, or how that all works out. Really not my area of expertise, but definitely a concern that came up. In addition to that, just fun fact, Old School Mashpee does refer to that area as pine tree cornered. There's, it's kind of noted for its pine trees. So, that'd be a lot of clearcutting, and I'm not sure, even though, you know, it's able to be sewed in, if there are additional concerns just due to the composition of the land and removal of a significant amount of trees in that area. What my biggest concern, other than the safety and kind of layout of the structure relative to Route 28, is also the proposal coming from the chair of the zoning board of appeals. I just, I'm not sure, I'm very new on the select board, so I'm still getting oriented, but I did find that, you know, concerning, you know, it does go to four stories, that is, we don't have four-story buildings in town, and I'm not clear how that relationship or proposal, like, for development is allowed or considered appropriate. I'm unsure of that, unclear of that, but that was definitely a concern of mine. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the height as apparently a lot of other people are, but I am concerned about the safety. The fact that the fire department can't get there is, it should be a deal-breaker for sure. As far as kids and playgrounds and stuff like that, I think there's ways around that. I think that, that's probably something that's, that's fixable, and we have to do something in this town. We don't have, every time we talk about affordable housing, we talk about the fact we don't have it, and then the next comment is, we really, you know, do something about it, and the next comment is, we don't do anything about it. So, we've got to do something. This may not be the best solution, but it sure as hell is a solution that, a first solution I've heard in a long time about doing anything. So, we can create nine million reasons why it's the wrong thing to do, I'd like to focus on why we can make it work, in my opinion.
If, I think that is why we're taking comments tonight, because I think our, the job will be, as this moves along and the people are reviewing it, is to look at the greatest benefits for the community. So, as we're thinking about, when you said we haven't done anything with affordable housing, and I agree with you, we need to move more quickly completely, but when you look at someplace like Leclerc Village that just opened, that has access to green space, people are looking out at some trees, it's, it's a very different kind of setup. So, I think one of the reasons for asking first department heads and boards and committees to get involved in this process is to look and say, how do we meet this need for affordable housing? But how do we do it in a way that's safe, that provides, if we decide that's, we all know safety's important, how do we do it in a way that shows that it's safe? How do we do it in a way that provides open space for kids if we believe that's an important thing? So, not to say, I, I understand what you're saying, it's frustrating that we need it, but we're not going to do it here. I think the question is more, what can all of the collective boards with expertise who came together and looked at the project and looked at the application, what can they bring to the project so that it really does meet the local needs, that it fits into Mashpee and office affordable housing? So, I don't see it as an either or, that's all I'm trying to say.
I'm sure.
Please.
I, I think, you know, to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Mike said, I mean, not, it's not like a for or against the project necessarily, but I do think, if you bring up the, like, the Leclerc Housing Development, I think that was a missed opportunity, to tell you the truth. I think a, a structure such as this, that should have been, that should have been 80 units in that area. I mean, I thought we, we put, what, there was a 30, is it 38 in that area at Leclerc Housing?
I think so.
And, talk about, and when they first came to us, my understanding was, they weren't going to clearcut everything. When I got there, before they started construction, everything was just wiped off the map. And then they put these struc, you know, these structures in there, and it's a, a nice development, but I think it was a missed opportunity that we could have actually had a lot more housing in that area. For 38, and this, we're talking about with 65, maybe if things were switched, it would have been even better, but even, we could have doubled that. That's my opinion. I, it, this also does a but, you know, Mashpee Commons, I mean, it's not, it's a file walk, not a file walk, you know, to the, to the green, right in front of the church, so, you know, space out there to, you know, play and the whole thing, there's plenty, a very close walk away. And, you know, the fact that it was proposed by the zoning board chair, I don't think that has any, and not in my mind, you know, that shouldn't even be a, a factor or even discussed, because, I mean, he happens to be a developer, and we happen to, you know, benefit from his experience being a developer, he understands code and requirements and the whole thing. And again, this application does go in front of the state, so we have a lot of information with questions and concerns, it goes in front of the state, and I don't know if we, beyond that, it's approved by the state, right? So.
And, well, we're in the preliminary, that will go to mass housing, mass housing will determine where the project is from there. If they have a positive determination, it goes to the ZBA. That's, that's the process.
That was my understanding, and that was my concern.
Right, and obviously, he wouldn't weigh in on his own project, but, I mean, just.
I would hope not.
Come on, really?
So.
You can't.
One, one of the other things that hasn't come up that I thought was compelling is in thinking about, thinking about health, and also, and water, is the stormwater runoff, the retention basin is, seems like it's pretty well-filled now, judging from the looks of it. So, it would be difficult for that to take almost 1.86 acres that are 80% covered by impervious surfaces, and that's going to drain into nearby 28. So, I think that's something to be concerned about. My, another concern I have, and again, I agree with everybody, we need affordable housing, the wastewater flow, I believe there's, from what I've read in, I can't remember which document, it might have been the planning board, there's sufficient capacity to treat, and we're, as I said, it's a real plus, it's on a sewer service area, and Mashpee Commons has a very good reputation for it, the way they treat water, but the recharge area isn't there. The recharge area is insufficient. Also, we are going to have to find a way to explain where, how we aggregate nitrogen in order to address going beyond, and I know we're going to be, you know, this is zoning at a ZBA, so we'll go beyond this, but how we go beyond the approved-by right four bedrooms per acre, which would give you about seven bedrooms here, to, I think we're at 122 bedrooms. So, how do we, how do we deal with nitrogen aggregation? And how do we ensure that we're not worsening the quality of the bay that we're working to, to clean? So, the stormwater runoff, thinking about water quality, and I think that's something that could be addressed, it just needs a different or more inadequate drainage. The other issue that was raised by several people was the parking, that, given the fact that we have so many two and three bedrooms there, that 1.5 parking spaces might be inadequate. That was raised by several people. The sewer commission raises the issue of the additional wastewater byproducts, and many people raised this four-story building. Those are other things I noticed. Anyone?
That, that was a key point also for me, and I think it was raised by a couple different, I saw it in a few different places on the, in the comments, the issue with the Mashpee Commons having the capacity for discharge, that, that was concerning, because the affluent that comes out of their plant, it's right at the back of the Mashpee River, where it does discharge, and, and that's a concern. So, I, I think, one of them was very articulate and suggested that it would limit their future growth, they would have to not complete some of their currently proposed projects in order to accommodate the discharge of this project, and that, that's a concern.
Yeah, no.
Can't exceed the, I think that location has limitations and, as to how much it can discharge, and, you know, this wasn't factored into that, I don't, it doesn't look like. So, that, that's a concern. We're trying to clean up the waters, and I don't, I don't know how to mitigate that.
And they, they may have, be able to put in a mitigation plan, but I don't either, so it's a concern.
So, for my.
Yeah, I know, that's, I, so much that goes into this.
And I am all for affordable housing, it's just, you know, with the size and scale of this and the, the small parcel, I, I just don't know if, as it's currently proposed, it, it's not really, I, I can't support it the way it's proposed currently.
Well, we'll be, so, we'll be incorporating all the comments that people make when we talk about it.
Okay.
Is there any, anything else? I think we've hit on most of the main points that it come from, that come from the comments that are in here, unless somebody sees anything else that they would like to stress.
One more comment, that was in one of these letters, was about the elevators, that there's only one.
Just one.
And that stood out to me as well, just in terms of safety or emergency evacuation or accessibility, that there would only be one, as of, right, as it's proposed, that there is only one elevator.
Good catch. So, the elevator's an ADA. Okay, so, based, based on the comments that we have from these people who did this, went to the site visit and have reviewed, and the collective comments for tonight, would this board be all right with the town planner drafting a letter, working with the town manager and, and me, and bringing it back for your consideration?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
You okay with that? Okay.
And that we would review the next, or approve it the next?
Well, we have to, so, we're meeting on July 28th. This needs to be, that's why I wanted to have the discussion tonight. What we want to avoid is to come on the 28th and look and say, oh, we want to revise this, 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 and this. There can be a few revisions, I would anticipate there would be, but we want to make sure that we've heard everybody's comments tonight, and drawing from your comments, the collective comments in here, that we're able to draft a letter that will only need minor adjustments. So, as I said, that's why I wanted to spend the time with everybody tonight on this.
So, the directive to the town, town planner is, I know for me, is, I, I concur with the majority of the comments as stated, I think they were very articulate, they were very comprehensive, they covered a lot of different considerations I think we all should be concerned with, and so, I mean, that's, that's kind of how the letter's going to be framed. I, I guess is what I'm looking for, how others feel at the table.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, I mean, with the exception of, like, the redundancy, I mean, you know.
Of course.
Yeah, just, you get out the redundancy, and then you, you alleviate. of course, yeah, just, you get out the redundancy, and then you, you alleviate, you know, eighteen pages, you know? But if they're a concern, they're a concern. I mean, there's not, yeah, I don't think you can...
And putting together kind of a matrix, so we see which concerns are voiced more often and give those priority.
Yeah, and it's more, it's less choppy, if you will. This could be safety concerns.
There are definitely ones that rose to the top that were pretty concurrent on most committees.
Some, thank good, Madam Chair. So, my understanding right now, if I'm hearing the board correctly, and I would appreciate any clarity, number one, is the safety concern relative to the fire concerns. And then, secondly, there has been some, not unanimous, but there's been some concern regarding the height and the character. Correct?
Which relates to safety as well. That's kind of...
And then there was a little bit of concern regarding the amenities.
And the affluent discharge.
And the discharge.
Yeah. I think that's a priority for me.
I would even, I would probably say that was probably the water flow, yeah, if you flip those two around. I think that would, that surfaced much more too, and that's something that would really need to be figured out, as Mike pointed out.
Are there any other concerns that members have that you would like framed in the letter, the draft letter?
I think a ma, a major concern that is found throughout the comments is the, the lack of any kind of green space. So, as a safe, as a safety issue, I think that it states that the front yard shall be Route one twenty-eight, Route twenty-eight. So, I think we want to be able to address that, again, as a safety issue.
I guess for me, I'm looking for it to be kind of general in nature, so that we don't box them into something, and, and we're looking for a redesign. We can't currently support the project as presented, and they need to come back with a much better design, is kind of, that's more palatable, that addresses some of the concerns stated in the comments, is kind of what I'm looking for. I don't, I, how you frame that, you know, I trust Town Planner to do so.
Okay.
But that's, that's kind of where I'm at with it. And I would, I would bring it up on the twenty-eighth. If, if it wasn't that, then, you know, just, I, I can't support the project as it's currently designed.
I think we're going to come up with something, so that whatever amendments and revisions that you have on the twenty-eighth, we'll be able to get them resolved.
That'll be important to do, because that's time-sensitive, it has to go out on the twenty-ninth. Okay. Is there anything else? All right. Authorization to grant signatory authority to the town manager for state revolving fund SRF documents related to the Mashpee Wakeby watershed wastewater system.
This is for time sensitivity, too.
I would accept a motion.
So moved. Unless somebody wants...
Second.
The easiest thing we did tonight, right?
Yeah. Can all agree on.
Let's get it done.
Second? Second? Any discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 I'm yes. Okay. Discussion and possible approval of select board statement regarding immigration and customs enforcement operations and practices. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a result of recent developments in the town of Falmouth, the chair of the select board requested that I proactively research whether any incidents have occurred in the town of Mashpee concerning the enforcement of immigration. I contacted the police chief and confirmed that there have been no known incidents involving immigration and customs enforcement or ICE officials. It is important to note that under existing state law, local law enforcement officers are prohibited from enforcing civil immigration detainers. Specifically, the Mashpee Police Department will not take people into custody solely on their immigration status. Additionally, any person under arrest locally will not have a bail process delayed based upon their immigration status. This is consistent with the 2017 Commonwealth versus Lunn decision, L-U-N-N. However, this does not apply to a traditionally issued federal arrest warrant. ICE officials have the authority pursuant to federal law to take certain enforcement action, and those that interfere with or obstruct such actions are subject to potential charges. Any assistance provided to any law enforcement agency from another agency is limited in scope as defined by law. Given the fact that there has been no involvement in any described immigration enforcement by any member of the Mashpee Police Department, there are no facts and circumstances for the select board to review. There have been no incidents. Therefore, I recommend no action on the matter. Finally, it is important for any person who is a victim of a crime or who is in need of emergency assistance to have confidence that they can contact first responders. The town of Mashpee endeavors to preserve public trust and to ensure public safety on a daily basis, and we will continue to do so. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. So, we'll take no action. Phyllis Sprout.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Sprout, and I am a resident of Mashpee. Select board members, I am here today to share critical information regarding our state's voter rolls and voter history from the 2024 general election. This information comes from extensive research conducted by a team of data experts at United Sovereign Americans, a nationwide nonpartisan volunteer organization. Their team meticulously analyzed official election files from both federal and state sources. While I'm not an official spokesperson for United Sovereign Americans, I am a dedicated volunteer who's deeply concerned by the findings, findings that are based exclusively on official state election data. Our analysis of the certified results from both 2022 and 2024 general elections reveals that not all votes counted were valid and accurate under the law. These findings are substantial and warrant a careful consideration. They have already been shared with state election officials and law enforcement agencies and have been submitted as evidence in federal courts as part of an ongoing litigation by United Sovereign Americans and other parties. United Sovereign Americans is not alone in raising these concerns. Recent executive actions at the federal level, such as the executive order entitled "Preserving and Protecting the Integrity of American Elections," underscores the urgent need to enforce and clarify existing election laws. These directives are intended to guide state compliance and ensure that election crimes are prosecuted, because the integrity of our electoral system is at stake. Therefore, we are here to seek your awareness, understanding, support, and action. We are proposing a resolution that highlights key statistics and calls for the end to the inaccuracies and uncertainties that compromise our elections. By adopting this resolution, you will demonstrate your commitment to your constituents' concerns and your dedication to upholding voter civil rights and the integrity of our elections here in Barnstable County. It is imperative to address these issues now. If we do not act, the same election system and procedures that led to errors in 2022 and 2024 will likely produce similar results in the upcoming 2026 general election. At this time, I will turn it over to the next reader to present the resolution.
Thank you, Phyllis. Brandon Edsall.
My name is Jean Perrini. I'm a resident of Sandwich, Massachusetts. Resolution for a legally valid 2026 general election. Whereas free and fair elections form the cornerstone of the Republic of the United States, as stated in Reynolds versus Sims, 377 U.S. 533, 1964, quote, "The right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise." Whereas election officials bear the responsibility to ensure elections remain accurate and free from manipulation in, in Reed Coi, 127 U.S. 731, 1888, the United States Supreme Court affirmed that election officials must strictly adhere to federal and state laws governing process defining election misconduct as follows, quote, "The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law," unquote. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government relies on four fundamental principles for validity in our elections. Number one, accurate voter rolls. Election officials must maintain voter registration lists that are current and correct, which includes facilitating the registration of eligible citizens as well as preventing the registration of non-citizens, fictitious names, and illegible, and illegible applicants, from the National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Number two, eligible votes only. Election officials must only count votes cast by eligible citizen voters, from the U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two. Number three, vote reconciliation. Election officials must ensure that the number of votes counted matches the number of participating voters. Number four, system accuracy. Voting, voting systems must achieve accurate standards set by Congress by limiting ballot counting errors to no more than one error per one hundred thousand, one hundred twenty-five thousand ballots, from the Help American Vote Act, 2002. Election officials must substantiate assertions of accurate outcomes with transparent controls. Whereas United Sovereign Americans conducted an independent audit of the Massachusetts 2024 general election and uncovered alarming irregularities, 752,902 voter registrations with material errors in admissions and voter database, 326,249 votes improperly counted from these illegible or uncertain registrants, 191,597 excess votes counted...
Excuse me, Mr. Perrini, I, could you wrap it up, please?
Two more sentences. 326,220 voting violations exceeding the legal error thresholds, where only 29 errors were allowed under federal law. And finally, the audit findings indicate severe violations of state and federal election laws and potential fraudulent certifications. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name I have on here is Brandon Edsall, and then I have Eric Horgan, so if you would come up and introduce yourself. And if you could try to keep it to three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Edsall. We just had a few in the beginning. Whereas election accuracy is defined as the ability to capture and report voter selections without error, by definition, only eligible citizens are voters. Election officials violate civil rights, undermine public trust, and jeopardize national security when they certify an election that fails to reach this standard. Whereas the irregularities in the official records of the 2024 general election call into question the validity of the election, threatening the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a republican form of government. This emergency inflicts immeasurable harm upon our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. It raises the specter of false representation in U.S. Congress and state governments, an allegation that election officials are currently unable to disprove. Therefore, be it resolved that the Mashpee Select Board of Barnstable County demands immediate action to ensure a legally valid and transparent 2026 general election by implementing the following measures. One, infrastructure compliance. Election officials must ensure that all voting systems meet Federal Information Security Modernization Act, FISMA, standards, and maintain compliance throughout the election process. Two, voter verification. Verify that all voters are legally eligible U.S. citizens before their votes are counted. If a voter's eligibility is in question, their vote must be held as provisional until legally verified. Three, ballot security. Enforce all issued and counted ballots to comply with robust chain of custody protocols to secure ballots from forgery, tampering, coercion, destruction, or injection. Four, accurate counts. Ensure all voted ballots are received, and every valid ballot is accurately counted, with any material questions resolved through lawful adjudication procedures with oversight. And five, proven outcomes. Election officials must investigate and resolve, or if necessary, readminister, any elections that cannot be proven accurate and compliant. In every jurisdiction, officials must provide records substantiating election and initiative results to citizens. Additionally, officials must securely store all ballots and operational records, including electronic records, to protect them from auditing purposes, from tampering, or alteration. Be it further resolved that the Mashpee Select Board calls upon county, state, and federal legislators, law enforcement agencies, prosecutors, judges, and election boards to uphold these principles, ensure legal compliance, and restore public confidence in our electoral system. Our signatures to this resolution affirm our commitment to protecting the constitutional mandate of legitimate representative government and ensuring that every valid vote is counted accurately and lawfully. Thank you.
Thank you. And, is it Eric Horgan? Do I have that correct? And I'll ask you to keep it at three minutes as well. Thank you.
In conclusion, you have just heard a resolution that exposes significant inaccuracies from the voter registration through the certification of the 2024 general election. It calls for immediate substantive action to ensure the integrity of the 2026 general election for all voters. The resolution is firmly grounded in multiple U.S. Supreme Court precedents, which underscore the necessity of these corrective measures. Our current election procedures do not fully comply with established laws, and these laws are too often disregarded. Some citizens, including elected officials, mistakenly believe that these issues can be ignored because the president, the current administration, and other officials are handling it. This complacency represents an abdication of civic responsibility. Benjamin Franklin's warning, "It's a republic if you can keep it," applies not only to his generation, but to ours as well. Your leadership and decisive action are urgently needed. Our voting system, which should protect our most fundamental right, the right to choose our representatives, is failing to deliver accurate, transparent, and verifiable results. Should we continue to ignore the anomalies within our election system, a system essential to our national security? The cost of inaction extends far beyond dollars. It threatens our economy, military, foreign policy, public health, and confidence of our youth, and our national dignity. The stakes could not be higher. I urge you to demonstrate your commitment to American representative government by passing this resolution. Let us consider the broader context. Many Americans, including a significant number of residents in Massachusetts and Barnstable County, have concerns about the reliability and transparency of our elections. While we all wish that this were not the case, official government's data substantiates these concerns, and the law requires that they be addressed to safeguard our liberty. Regrettably, government representatives at various levels have not been transparent or responsive to citizen audits of official election data. The right to choose our representatives through lawful and transparent elections is the cornerstone of our constitutional republic, the right fiercely defended for over two centuries. Today, you have the opportunity to uphold that legacy... Today, you have the opportunity to uphold that legacy and demonstrate it to your constituents that you value American liberty by passing this resolution. For further information, the United Sovereign Americans website provides informative videos explaining the anomalies, apparent legal violations, and lawsuits identified in Massachusetts and other states. I encourage you to visit uniteforfreedom.com. That's unite, the number for, freedom.com to learn more about this vital issue. Thank you for your attention and consideration. Madam Chair, I have a copy for you, and everyone else on the Select Board is going to be receiving an electronic copy tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Arden Russell. Hi, Arden.
Hi, Arden Russell, separate from that. I'm here tonight to reiterate and to state my strong opposition to the use of Zero Gunther's Lane for wastewater treatment. That parcel is a parcel of open space. Open space should never be used for municipal infrastructure, but it's especially important in this case because this parcel of open space is the requisite open space for a cluster subdivision. It was promised and committed to those residents that this parcel would remain open space. It was committed to the planning board, who issued that permit that this land would remain forever open space, and it was a commitment made to the residents of this town. All of our trust has now been broken because this you are now going to be using that for municipal infrastructure. The deed clearly states that this is an open space parcel. It says the said premise, said premises are conveyed subject to the restrictions that said premises shall be kept in an open and natural state and not built upon for residential use. No mention of any expiration dates. The tax taking just mentions this parcel as being a parcel of open space, no mention of any expirations. This parcel, as I said, is clearly open space. It was designated as such, and that should never expire. This is setting a terrible, terrible precedent to use dedicated open space for other uses. I urge you to find an alternative location for that treatment plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Additional topics? I don't think we have any. Liaison reports?
None at this time.
So I just, as the liaison to the tribe, I want to say the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe hosted a very successful 104th powwow over the Fourth of July weekend. As a non-Indigenous woman, I can't speak about the significance of the powwow to members of the Wampanoag and other tribes, but as a resident, it was a wonderful experience. There were so many people there, and it was a wonderful experience for everybody to experience and learn more about tribal cultures and traditions. I have another one. The Council on Aging continues to interview two people to fill open positions, and they continue for as long as the Boston Food Bank allows to do Brown Bag Friday. Brown Bag Friday is a small operation, typically 28 low-income residents come in and pick up staples and and some protein in bags that are decorated by children. For some people, it's the major touchstone with the community, so that continues to go on. And I don't have anything else. Water quality updates? I think we did that tonight. Town manager updates?
Yes, I am continuing to provide a draft, which obviously was not ready for this evening, regarding the special events policy. Also, as a result of taking a look at Policy 024 Vehicle For Hire, as a result of the gentleman who came in this evening, there are some minor revisions that were made in 2014. That was the last time it was updated, so this policy also needs to be updated a little bit. And I'm going to put that as a lower priority than the special events policy, but both of those are a work in progress. Also, I know that the board was made aware of the South Cape Beach closure, which was just for literally, I think, hours on Friday, due to the testing, the second test that was conducted, provided different or better results, I should say. The Mass Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities approved the Mashpee Housing Production Plan effective June 27, 2025. The plan has a five-year term, expiring June 26, 2030. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. No executive session, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.